Oh, nice. They're like, "Is it nice though?"
I'm going to explain this without being loud.
And I still have three cases.
Yeah. Yeah. And I still have three cases.
Yeah. City Council.
Yeah. You were in great shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I said that, you know, man, I want to ask you a little letter and tell you the message.
Basically, I heard you.
That didn't make me feel pretty.
Right.
Yeah.
It's still happening pretty rapidly.
So they landed the Marines and I want to show you what's here, but I was in a strip and they made me on the bus and landed.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we might as well get started whether we have a crowd or not. A lot of them either think it's 6:30 or a bunch of them, we did get some calls that says, "I'm not coming because of the coronavirus." So, wouldn't have a...
We're going to have a good time tonight if you guys are here. Start off with, let's see if we can show you right, the bench right tonight, behind you guys. Friends of the US, to divide, help unite our states of America, and to do your part for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. My notes are out here. We want to really appreciate all of you who's been able to be out tonight, worked through the sunblock and virus. And we want to do a special thank you to our sponsors. If you haven't been there to do business, if you need to try and shop locally, sponsoring us tonight is the Flower College on 30 North Market and Kent Tax Service at W3 South Market. So, tax season's down here, you should be there with the tenants, and put some over here in. And leave flowers to you guys for your wife, but if she takes them home to her, go to the Flower College. And of course, we want to give a thanks to the Bay Martin for the White Lake and the Shroom, the Mandate of Trust. The future appreciate that. Shop local in all aspects. What we're going to do tonight, I mean, we need to start off with just a thought. Let's remember our government, which we're dealing with, like in this case, the city government, City of Cortez. Our government as a whole is not a democracy, it is a republic. A republic here, constitutional republic, with representatives. And we're looking, and that's in all levels of the government, not just the federal government, down to the state, down to the county, down to the city. The city, it's all exactly the same. The government is a representative government, and that's why we're looking at councilors or the city of Cortez, you're representatives of the people. What we're planning to do tonight is, we're going to ask you some questions after we have an adventure. And then, respond with your question. The introduction, if you've been through it before, most of the people that have seen you, they know who you are, but give a little, a small mention, function of who you are. But give it two minutes, because you've been in and done it pretty well, a lot of people, the street you are, that been about you. And then, we'll ask the questions and then your answer. We'll both start running into each other and pass the mics, help each other with the answers. If you can keep your answer, correct it around five minutes. We're not going to, we're not going to crowd tonight, not going to cut you off real short, but if you can keep it down to just time is the destiny, because you look, and there's one, five is here tonight, and a number of questions. We have three hours, 10 minutes, pretty soon, we've got time, slipped up real quick. So try to keep the questions down. Those in the audience are pieces of paper on the table, if the questions that we ask, many of these questions have been from a day before. And so, we've got those already scheduled. And if we get through them, and if you turn in your questions, you put it here, and you kind of compile them, and some of them might be duplicates, kind of the same question, stated a different way, try to keep it where we can look at the one question covering the subject. So turn those in, if you have one. If you don't need to, it's fine, the questions, your concerns addressed by us. The discussion, it'd be good for the audience to make notes of what you liked or don't like, my, the response you took, and say, "Do I want to vote for him or her, or really not? I don't know." Well, after, most of our time, we would like to have available for the, the audience to be able to, what, double you on a one-on-one basis. Reason I say that, we have found in the least viewed view, is that we use the same words, it's common words, and we have different meanings attached to them. Our common one, our little 912 group, we are real uptight about following the Constitution. So, we talk about, and you say, "Hey, I believe in the Constitution." Really? Do you believe it the same way I do? What in there, you know, our definition of what we get specifics about, we don't understand each other. We use the same words, but we don't really communicate. So, if we make notes ahead of time, when we get through with the questioning period, then we're just going to break up and spend the rest of the time, whatever's necessary, to break in little groups or individuals, buttonhole, and say, "Hey, you said this from your answer. What did you, that's not what I meant." Take that time to really clarify what we're saying to each other. That's about the rules. Anything else I need to say but the rules of the game? I guess not. But we're going to get started now, and I hope we'll do that, because I think maybe we'll, left to right. Justin, we'll start off with you, and just kind of give a little introduction to yourself and pass the mics around.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming out. It's nice to see you guys. A couple of you I know, a couple of you I don't. I'm getting to know everybody up here. My name's Justin Vasterling. I'm the general manager of the Holiday Inn Express here in Cortez. I oversee operations at the Destination Grill, which a lot of you remember as Cocos, and I oversee operations at the Retro Inn, which a lot of you probably remember as the Bell Row. That's definitely a landmark here in town. I basically come at this from an operations perspective. I have a lot that I can offer in oversight and operations for the city, knowing where we should be spending our money, where we shouldn't, helping look at things as a business operator. And that's it.
My name is Rafe O'Brien. There we go. Rafe O'Brien, and I'm running, there we go. Is it working? Okay. My name's Rafe O'Brien, and I was born and raised here in Cortez, Colorado. I went to culinary school whenever I graduated high school here, and after that, I moved back home because I really liked this community and really wanted to be here. This is a place that I truly see myself living for the rest of my life and growing up, and this is the opportunity I decided to take upon myself to try to help this city and run for this position. In high school, I was on the FCC LA, which encouraged family community leaders of America, and that was another reason why I wanted to pursue this, was this was something that was instilled in me from a long time ago, through high school and then following on into my college years in the service community. I truly, truly love this town, and that's the reason why I want to be here, guys.
Hello, everyone. My name's Bill Banks. I've lived in Cortez for 44 years. I was married to my wife Lori for 41 years. She passed away a couple of years ago. We raised two children, got four grandchildren. I've worked in the energy sector all my life. My thing, my reason for running for city council is to try to bring some responsibility and accountability into spending taxpayer money. I believe in separating wants from needs, making sure we take care of our needs first, which are fully funding our police department, our fire department, and our public works departments, and having an adequate rainy day fund. And after that, I'm not sure what else we're really responsible for. So, those are, those are the reasons. I just want to see some reliability, responsibility, and accountability in spending other people's money. I've been pretty frugal all my life, and I'd like to see taxpayer funds spend wisely. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Medina. I work for the county in the mapping department. I've lived in Cortez for four years and in the southwest for almost 10 years. I have experience on city boards, and I feel like this is a critical moment for Cortez, and I'd like to see city council be more proactive in the future of Cortez, to be more business friendly while protecting private property rights, but also, you know, really looking at the economic development of our community and the future of it. So, thanks.
Hello, everyone. I'm Raymond Goodall. I've lived here all my life, except the time I spent in Navy. Spent six years there, overseas, in the North Atlantic. Went through all my schooling here. I'm 84 years old. I started herding cows for Art Nielsen at the age of 12, out here near Gwinnett, when it was no fences hardly at all there. Hunted rabbits on the way home from school under Ed Kemper. We had our rifles with us then. I was in the second grade. I looked at a gun like it was a tool. Took care of it like a tool. And that was my bringing up. My hardest subject in school was English. I couldn't dissect a sentence, noun, pronoun, adjective, verbs, adverbs, conjections, I didn't know the difference. But Gladys Hart got me there and got me over the hump, and I just want a chance to pay Cortez back for some of the good times I've had here. And that's about all I can say.
Okay, thank you. To each one of you. Again, to the watching audience, if you're watching live on Mesa Media, you missed not a good opportunity to buttonhole these guys. Glad to see you there. Now, let's get on to some questions. Who's got the mic there? Raymond was the last one.
Can you hear me?
Okay, now that we, as long as you ended up at the mic, let's just start back with you going back the other way. Here's the question. There's a, in fact, I even have a copy of it. It's the oath of office that you will be taking when, if and when you are elected. You will take, you'll sign an oath of office to be a commissioner on the commission of the city council. The, what it says is, "I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, and the laws of the State of Colorado, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city councilman, or council lady." I don't know what they do on that one. How, issues come up, like the city code, different issues come up. There'll be many issues. The staff will bring issues up to the council. How, how will you decide when there is a conflict? But how will you make your decision when there's conflicts?
Okay. I went to the library the other day, got the Constitution of Colorado. I'm in the process of reading that right now, but I plan on reading the, I've got a full copy of our Constitution, and I'll abide by it and face the questions as they come at me. But I will, I will stand with the Constitution. The republic is my pick of our democracies, and there's a big difference between republic and democracy. A republic's for the people, by the people. And a democracy is under a monarch or a self-appointed dictator, and that's my understanding of it.
Rachel?
I believe that we must uphold the rules that are in our Constitution and that come down from the state, and if they contradict each other, I would really defer to, you know, our police chief or the sheriff's office, because they really are the enforcers of those rules. And, you know, I know what, and it depends on the subject, on what I believe, but I would be one of seven voices, so it's really about how the community feels about certain policies and rules, and how our law enforcement feels about enforcing those.
Bill Banks?
Constitutions, both the federal and our state constitution, were made as a set of guidelines for laws to be written about, or written to. If, if a law contradicts either constitution, the Constitution supersedes that law, so I would be one that would uphold what the Constitution said, whether it be the Colorado Constitution or the United States Constitution. Yeah, that's my position.
Rafe?
I would also uphold the Constitution. I would also hope that any other person that, you know, takes their job seriously or is in a area of, you know, managing people like our police chief, I would hope that he would take the Constitution serious, or even our Bill of Rights, Colorado Bill of Rights, serious, and I would hope that we would have the backing, or, and I would back them also. Again, just trying to encourage, you know, following what our state constitution has. And again, like Mr. Banks said, it's a guideline that we can follow to, again, assure that everybody's on the same path.
Justin?
Oh, man. So, I've watched a couple of you guys' videos. We need to get your viewership up. I will help however we can. With the 912 Commission, I love it. It, there's, I don't think I know enough, and I think I have more questions for you two than I have answers for you. It's, when I, when we were here last time, what I felt was that there was some things that you guys feel are very important, and from watching a couple of episodes, I agree, they're super important. I don't think I know enough yet about the issues, especially about our Constitution. What I realize is how little I know about it, and I have lots of questions for both of you guys about it. When the state Constitution doesn't jive with the, our federal Constitution, who's right? Like, yeah, but, I mean, like, I'd like to kind of know what everybody thinks. I think the more people who I get an opinion from, it helps me more. But I just don't, I know that you guys have some positions and some things that you feel that there might be going on right now, possibly in the city or in the state, that may not support the Constitution, like laws that maybe are unconstitutional. And I think we, we as Americans, don't know nearly enough about that. And I think the big issue, rather than finding out what your candidates know, is we need as candidates to be more educated about our Constitution, is my feeling about it. Wow, that's only a minute. I think there's a schism between laws getting made, like, like, for instance, does the president get to declare war, or is it the Congress? Who gets to do that? I've got tons of questions, guys. I am not opposed to a constitutional advisory. I think more people need to be talking about this. I need to know more. I would like to learn more. I'm not sure what the right thing to do is. There, I bet that if we walk through the Constitution, there might be a couple of things where I'm like, "Oh, God, really? In all cases? Maybe? There's some exceptions? I don't know." It's a, I don't want to make a pledge to you about something, I'm like a, maybe a ninth grader on? I think I need to be, have a college-level education about some stuff, and I'd like, I look forward to that. For whoever that comes from, even if someone's wrong, I think people that are wrong about laws, laws change because they don't apply sometimes, and they change sometimes because we're wrong about something. And sometimes, we need to improve things, and sometimes, improving them is just for a group of people, and it really hurts some other people. So this is a very complex thing that I really look forward to leveling up on, and you two are dialed in on that. You have a great podcast, and, man, it would be super awesome to see you guys teach a course or something, something local, not college-level, so that we can all learn a little bit. I was shocked at how much I don't know about government before I started running. It's pretty, pretty intense, so. Wow, that's only three minutes. Should I just campaign for two minutes or surrender the mic?
Surrender the mic. And to answer, to answer your question, we could probably make arrangements to give some classes. Let's go on to the next question. We'll get, we'll start off kind of a little rotation here, start off with Rachel this time. And work her way back down, and Ray, you'll get to be last. This is a, really quite an interesting question. There's a lot of people in the county that own property or businesses, and/or businesses in the city, not living in the city, they don't get to vote on the issues of the city. Will you, as a city council, would you move to make and allow the non-city residents of owners and property and businesses to have a vote on city issues?
I think it's a great and valid question that's probably been brought up for years and decades, and I think that people who own property in our city have vested rights and interests and, but don't get a say. So I, I would like to see if we are going to change that policy, that we define it to Montezuma County residents, because Cortez is within Montezuma County, and I think Montezuma County residents are a huge part of the Cortez community, and I, but I don't want it to see it rapidly expand beyond that, because then we're going to go down the slope of, well, should La Plata County residents vote in our county commissioner race because they own property over here? And I don't want it to just expand beyond that, so I would support it, but I want it to keep it to Montezuma County residents only.
Bill?
Yes, I echo her concerns about it expanding and large corporations like Walmart, they have, we have a business here in not allowing them to be able to vote and something like that. But, but residents of Montezuma County that own businesses in Cortez, have skin in the game, bring tax revenue to the city, I absolutely think they should have a say in what goes on, and I would be in favor of allowing them to vote in city election.
Rafe?
So, I have a little bit, I guess, different outlook on this, guys. I actually think that we should start with landowners' rights first and see how that works with landowners. I'm also okay with even if you own, if you live in Texas but own here, if you've paid your property taxes because you have property here, we should at least start with the property as a trial base to basically start this, to see if it's actually something, because I do see both of their concerns with the corporations coming in and having a vote. But again, with that being said, if we would allow businesses to have a vote, Walmart would only have one vote. It's not like they would have 15. They would have one, which would give them maybe the fighting chance to maybe get other people on their side, which is fine, but maybe nobody would want to be on their side. So again, to basically start with the property owner's rights, go ahead and give them a chance to actually vote and have a say. We also have a lot of business or property owners that own property here that live just south of us in New Mexico, Arizona, or, you know, in Utah, and those people are more our neighbors than anybody else. They live, again, less than 45 minutes away. That's kind of a hard one to just say Montezuma County. We have other neighbors. We need to be economically developed, you know, outside of just our, you know, Cortez, or out of Colorado, because again, we do have other neighbors. And to finish up, start with landowners, then go to business owners and see how that's worked, because we'll know exactly how the landowner's vote has worked.
If they contradict each other, I would really defer to, you know, our police chief or the sheriff's office because they really are the enforcers of those rules. And, you know, I know what, and it depends on the subject, on what I believe, but I would be one of seven voices. So, it's really about how the community feels about certain policies and rules and how our law enforcement feels about enforcing those.
Bill Banks?
Constitutions, both the federal and our state constitution, were made as a set of guidelines for laws to be written about, or written to. If a law contradicts either constitution, the constitution supersedes that law. So, I would be one that would uphold what the constitution said, whether it be the Colorado Constitution or the United States Constitution. Yeah, that's my position.
Ray?
I would also uphold the constitution. I would also hope that any other person that, you know, takes their job seriously or is in an area of, you know, managing people like our police chief, I would hope that he would take the constitution serious or even our bill of rights, Colorado bill of rights, serious. And I would hope that we would have the backing, or and I would back them also. Again, just trying to encourage, you know, following what our state constitution has. And again, like Mr. Banks said, it's a guideline that we can follow to, again, assure that everybody's on the same path.
Justin?
Oh, man. So, I've watched a couple of you guys' videos. We need to get your viewership up. I will help however we can with the 9/12 Commission. I love it. It there's, I don't think I know enough, and I think I have more questions for you two than I have answers for you. It's when I, when we were here last time, what I felt was that there was some things that you guys feel are very important. And from watching a couple of episodes, I agree, they're super important. I don't think I know enough yet about the issues, especially about our constitution. What I realize is how little I know about it. And I have lots of questions for both of you guys about it. When the state constitution doesn't jive with the, our federal constitution, who's right? Like, yeah, but, I mean, like, I'd like to kind of know what everybody thinks. I think the more people who I get an opinion from, it helps me more. But I just don't, I know that you guys have some positions and some things that you feel that there might be going on right now, possibly in the city or in the state, that may not support the constitution, like laws that maybe are unconstitutional. And I think we, we as Americans don't know nearly enough about that. And I think the big issue, rather than finding out what your candidates know, is we need, as candidates, to be more educated about our constitution, is my feeling about it. Wow, that's only a minute. I think there's a schism between laws getting made, like, for instance, does the president get to declare war, or is it the Congress? Who gets to do that? I've got tons of questions, guys. I am not opposed to a constitutional advisory. I think more people need to be talking about this. I need to know more. I would like to learn more. I'm not sure what the right thing to do is. There, I bet that if we walk through the constitution, there might be a couple of things where I'm like, oh, God, really? In all cases? Maybe? There's some exceptions? I don't know. It's a, I don't want to make a pledge to you about something I'm like, maybe a ninth grader on? I think I need to be, have a college-level education about some stuff, and I'd like, I look forward to that. For whoever that comes from, even if someone's wrong, I think people that are wrong about laws, laws change because they don't apply sometimes, and they change sometimes because we're wrong about something. And sometimes, we need to improve things. And sometimes, improving them is just for a group of people, and it really hurts some other people. So, this is a very complex thing that I really look forward to leveling up on. And you two are dialed in on that. You have a great podcast. And, man, it would be super awesome to see you guys teach a course or something, something local, not college-level, so that we can all learn a little bit. I was shocked at how much I don't know about government before I started running. It's pretty, pretty intense. So, wow, that's only three minutes. Should I just campaign for two minutes, or surrender the mic?
Uh, surrender the mic. And to answer, to answer your question, we could probably make arrangements to give some classes. Let's go on to the next question. We'll get, we'll start off kind of a little rotation here, start off with Rachel this time. And work her way back down, and Ray, you'll get to be last. This is a, really quite an interesting question. There's a lot of people in the county that own property or businesses and/or businesses in the city. Not living in the city, they don't get to vote on the issues of the city. Will you, as a city council, would you move to make and allow the non-city residents of owners and property and businesses to have a vote on the city issues?
I think it's a great and valid question that's probably been brought up for years and decades. And I think that people who own property in our city have vested rights and interests and, but don't get a say. So, I, I would like to see if we are gonna change that policy, that we define it to Montezuma County residents. Because Cortez is within Montezuma County, and I think Montezuma County residents are a huge part of the Cortez community and I, but I don't want it to see it rapidly expand beyond that. Because then we're gonna go down the slope of, well, should La Plata County residents vote in our county commissioner race because they own property over here? And I don't want it to just expand beyond that. So, I would support it, but I want it to keep it to Montezuma County residents only.
Bill?
Yes, I echo her concerns about it expanding and large corporations like Walmart, they have, we have a business here in not allowing them to be able to vote and something like that. But residents of Montezuma County that own businesses in Cortez, have skin in the game, bring tax revenue to the city, I absolutely think they should have a say in what goes on. And I would be in favor of allowing them to vote in the city election.
Ray?
So, I have a little bit, I guess, different outlook on this, guys. I actually think that we should start with landowners' rights first and see how that works with landowners. I'm also okay with even if you own, if you live in Texas but own here, if you've paid your property taxes because you have property here, we should at least start with the property as a trial at base to basically start this, to see if it's actually something. Because I do see both of their concerns with the corporations coming in and having a vote. But again, with that being said, if we would allow businesses to have a vote, Walmart would only have one vote. It's not like they would have 15. They would have one, which would give them maybe the fighting chance to maybe get other people on their side, which is fine, but maybe nobody would want to be on their side. So, again, to basically start with the property owners' rights, go ahead and give them a chance to actually vote and have a say. We also have a lot of business or property owners that own property here that live just south of us in New Mexico, Arizona, or, you know, in Utah. And those people are more our neighbors than anybody else. They live, again, less than 45 minutes away. That's kind of a hard one to just say, Montezuma County. We have other neighbors. We need to be economically developed, you know, outside of just our, you know, Cortez, or out of Colorado, because again, we do have other neighbors. And to finish up, start with landowners, then go to business owners and see how that's worked. Because we'll know exactly how the landowners' vote has worked to then turn that into establishing it into if the business owners can want to have a vote.
Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, man, it's a big no. Take a second. I don't think Montezuma County residents should vote in the city. I'll oppose it as a city council member if I get elected. And I just wanna, I don't want to start a fight or anything, but I want to throw something at you guys and think about just a few things that, that reasons why I think that. It's not because what you might think, and I've spent a lot of time asking county residents, lots of my friends are county residents, why they feel they should. And you know what is something that you guys might laugh at? Do you know when I ask somebody who lives in the county if they, if they want to live in the city? You guys know what you would say if you lived in the county? It's usually like, ah, explicative, no, I'd never live in the city, you couldn't pay me to live in the city. That's a, that's a high 80% of, close to 100 people I've talked to, maybe not 100, maybe, maybe 80, that have very strong feelings about how horrible Cortez is and that they wouldn't live there if you paid them, and there's a reason they live in the county because of all the BS in the city. So, think about that for a second. There's a, if we just dealt with that, and I'm not saying everyone feels that way, but that's a sentiment. And if I lived in the county, I would feel that way, I think. I felt that way in Dolores, when I lived in Dolores, I guess that's the county. I hated going to Cortez, you guys. I called it the big city, and it was a super bummer, and I didn't want to go there, and I went there to shop, and then I got back to Dolores and just walked down the river and had a great time. What I'd like to, what I think is, everyone's voice should be heard, but I don't think everyone should have a vote. And especially on the city council, if 35,000 county residents get to vote for city council against 10,000 city residents, we got, we should really consider what we're trying to do there if there's gonna be a city council vote. If we're gonna vote, what do we get to vote on versus what do we don't? Is it just ordinances? And there is a cultural divide. I love our agricultural community. I moved handsets for the first time when, I think I was out here for about five or six years, and then I got the opportunity to move handsets. That's super fun. That's almost a lifestyle, just moving sprinklers. I like that stuff because I probably didn't grow up having to do it, so it's deeply interesting to me. But there's a couple other points I want to make that I think are really interesting. I really freak out to hear people talk about landowners and property owners. That is a little intense for me. It almost sounds like we're talking about a privileged class of people, and then we talk about like property owners, landowners, that starts to get a little, it'd be a little interesting. I think even someone who's not in a great position to own something, and maybe they just work at one of a business owner's business, I think that's, doesn't mean they're less of a person or shouldn't have a vote if we're gonna go that route. It freaks me out that we just want to give landowners and business owners a vote, but we don't want to let anyone else that lives in that county vote. I think that's, some mirror time is important for county residents to think about landowners and business owners voting. I think their say is critical. If you have a business in town, man, you should have a say, because the city's gonna be affecting your business a significant amount of the time, and we need to hear what's important to you. Do you want to do landscaping? Do you not? Why? What is the burden? What is the benefit of water conservancy? There's so many issues there. And I think, yeah, so just, I may not be your candidate, I get it, but, and I don't know if I came off a little too hard for you guys, or aggressive, or maybe adversarial, but if it's in your heart to say, I'd never live in the city, I live in the county for a reason, really think about what you're gonna be doing with your vote if you get it. That would scare me a little bit if some people that thought that were trying to vote on things that are gonna happen in the city. But everybody that has a vested interest in the city should have a say, and everyone should have a say. I don't think that we should eliminate, right now, I guess there's a law, I don't know if it's constitutional, you guys could tell us that, that they only want vested interests to be able to speak at quasi-judicial things, and I see the point in that, but I don't see where someone's opinion hurts anybody. It's only going to improve how we view something.
Ray?
I look at it a little bit different. I think the country folks do have a business here. They come in, they spend their money here, preferably, or I hope.
Your mic's going on, Ray? We can't hear you. You're talking.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I do look at it a little different. I do think the country folks should have a say. If we have a say over them, I don't see how it can be one-sided, you know, in this land zone code. I, I look at it a little bit different, I think. I'd like to hear their side of everything, as well as our side of it, and go from there. And that'll be, what I'm looking for is a cooperation from both sides while I'm serving on this board. Thank you.
Very good. We'll start off, Bill, with you on this next question. I think we got two questions that was given to us, and I think we can kind of put them into one, one question with two parts to it. And maybe you can answer this one, maybe. I'll read both of them and kind of combine them in your thinking. The first question that was given us was, in view of the recent land use code, as they put it, property grab, should those involved still be holding positions of trust in the city government? And the other part is, the city land use code document, this, in it was a disaster. Will you push to vote to throw out the entire document and start over from scratch?
Yes, I believe the, I believe the land use code will come back up again. And when it does, it's like everything in life, it's a question of balance, and whoever's in deciding that at the time needs to look at not only what Cortez is going to look like in the future, but also look at people's private property rights. Do you own your property? Do I own my property, or does the city? And like I say, it's like, it's a question of balance. Everything has to, has to be balanced out. None of us, I think, want old cars with the tires off of them sitting up on blocks in people's front yards, but do we want to tell people what type of plants or flower, or what they plant in their yards? You know, there's, there's a, there's a question of balance, and some people that decide those things, those issues, need to take that into consideration. This mic kind of comes and goes. No, okay.
Now yours isn't working. So, as far as I'm, as far as I understood from whenever I went and talked to some of the heads up, as far as I know, the land use document is actually done, thrown out. We, they're not addressing it again. Also, the first question, why are they still involved in holding their positions? I can't answer for the current city council as to why they do what they do. That's on them. I can just assure you that whenever I am elected, I will at least ask certain questions in these meetings, and actually reach out to the public more. Going to some of these workshops, I've noticed that there's a little bit of fight back. We've noticed that the land use code got pushed relatively fast, our medians got pushed relatively fast. And actually, currently, we just, they changed, they are pushing, naming the park over at the south neighborhood. So, actually taking citizen's support and citizens' requests and actually going with them, instead of being defiant back, is another big one that I would, you know, hold up. And again, can't answer on why, you know, they did what they did, but they must have had a reason.
Okay, help me out. Land grab. Does this count against my time if I ask you guys to define land grab? Can you help me with that? What do you mean by land grab?
Well, that wasn't our question. It was one of our constituents.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was part of the question when you started. You were saying with the land use code, land grab or something. I don't.
That was in, that was in the question, but you say, I'm, we're not one, we're repeating the question from somebody that turned it in.
Oh, okay, I don't.
I think what you would find that they would say is, land grab is draining control over your private property.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm not for a new land use code. I would not support it if it came up. I think, you know what's awesome about, I just, I bought a house, I'm so lucky, I'm so lucky. It's awesome, I'm super happy, and I love screwing around in the yard. I've misspent so much money trying to fix up my house and having fun with it. I think that's what it should be. If you, if you want to put flowers in your yard, you should do it because you love flowers and you want your place to look beautiful. If you want a nice fence, you should do it because you want to, and you should have the choice. It freaks me out a little bit that there, that the code is as intense as it is. As an operator, we've hit some hurdles I can't jump over. I had my dang billboard down too long, and I can't rewrap it. You know, I, I've got the only two solid white painted billboards in Cortez, you guys. I'm probably mismanaging that a little bit. And they both just got tagged. If we had to rewrap the one south of town, which I'm in love with because it's the biggest dang billboard, which suits, I mean, I like that, I want the biggest billboard, that was $3,000 to have San Juan come up and mount that thing, to print it, and they tagged the heck out of it, and we were gonna rewrap it, and everybody's on the fence, and I didn't have a lot of support to rewrap it, I wanted to. We were gonna have a local artist, we wanted some kids, actually, high school kids, and get them some spray paint cans, and to do a retro and a destination grill billboard with like, the style of all the tagging that's going on, just to try and take control of it somehow. And I don't know how the heck I'd get kids on a ladder without, and feel good about it. But they just tagged it again, we just painted it. If I had to rewrap it, we'd have lost another $3,600 bucks. We were gonna have a mural painted at the retro, you guys, to have people take selfies in front of, like, with a little cutout. We had an artist, we were gonna pay her six grand, a local, and it's covered in frickin' spay paint, spray paint. It's frickin', I swear, we're, I think, that's my go-to when I'm really angry, sorry. I have a hospitality thing, I've got to find a substitute for my favorite curse words. But I guess what I'm saying is, no, no new land use code. I think if we have an issue where planning comes to us, or our city manager or residents say, hey, this is an issue, we gotta do something about it, we come together as a community, every one of us that lives here and in the county knows what it's like to get around town. My car bottoms out on half the streets in this town because I was stupid and bought a sports car. That's, I'd like that fixed, but that's not really fair for everybody. But we can, as a community, come together and make some common sense decisions, but, man, fix up your house if you want to, the city shouldn't tell us how to fix our house up. Because if you don't want to, man, you shouldn't have to do that.
Ray?
Okay. You know, when I was growing up, my granddad, you know, every kid they had, they got another 160 acres. That's how we got a lot of our property, you know? But at the same time, you had to improve it, and then some guy thought, well, you know, slavens is selling barbed wire now, we need to fence off this water hole so our cattle have water. And it took the cattlemen quite a period of time to figure out, hey, let's get the hell away from the barbed wire and leave the, leave the water holes where they are, let the cattle that needs a drink go there and drink. We all are human beings, we live together, we know each other, we work, we help each other, you know? And that's what I'd like to see come back to the county. And this includes our, our country folks, too, you know? I live in the city, my house is paid for, but I, you know, we're kind of getting, we're kind of getting away from who we were or are, hopefully, you know? I look at every one of you and I think a relative, you know? If we get to talking long enough, we may find out we are related. I don't know, this, this country, I don't know. I just finished having dinner with the class of 55 here. There's eight of us left, out of something like 300 when we went to high school down here. And we were talking who we're related to, Mahaffys, Dennison's, Tanners, Mahaffys. And a little girl at the end of the table says, you know, we'd better shut this conversation down, we're gonna find we're all related, and that may not be a good idea, you know? So, we, we kind of put hobbles on that and get away with that conversation, you know? But, yeah, I'd like to see the, the county come in and set the meetings with us and have a voice. Why not? They come, they spend their money here, they vote here, you know, they're part of us. And that's the way I look at it, guys. We're one family.
Okay, Rachel?
Okay, in regards to the first part of the question, the people of trust during the land use code adoption, the parties responsible really are the city manager, the previous city manager who is no longer here, and the current city council. They really are the decision-makers and the overseers of these processes. And I think, you're right, it, I'm not gonna lie to you, I was a part of the land use code development, sitting on the planning and zoning board. And at the time, you know, I realized there was a lot of issues with the land use code, and we spent meetings after meetings trying to vet sections of it. And I had come on the board when the land use code was already three years in progress. And at that point, it was like, we need to, we need to get this to the public and see how they feel. And at that time, there wasn't many people engaged. And so then, when it went to council, the waters basically did the work that the city council should have done by outreach and getting the public involved. And the public spoke against it, and so city council voted against it. So, I think there's a lot of lessons to be learned from that. And I think with the new city council, that the land use code amendments or a whole new one will come up again, and we need to be held accountable. We need to make sure that we are living up to what we promised you here now. Because, you're right, we need to get everybody involved who has vested interest, and really see what's gonna be best for our community. So, the best we can do is move forward and learn from those and keep people engaged, because I think that was one of the issues from the beginning, is, you know, you have your mandated public notices, but that, that clearly isn't enough. You have to be knowing, you know, really in tune with what the city's doing, and, and that's not the best approach. So, I think we need to help each other, keep the whole community engaged through the process again, and, and really see what's gonna be best for our city.
Let's see, we're ready for the next question, I guess, aren't we? Here's to Ray. He may or may not be aware, the local, state, national, and international organizations use the term smart growth and sustainable growth. What does that mean to you?
So, to me, that means making the growth and the sustainable growth decisions more fair and more well-in tuned with our community and cost-effective. Another one would be developing in like existing places we already have. Main Street is a good one, our industrial park is another good one, bringing business back to the areas that we don't have business right now. Also with that, it entails an attractive community. right now. Also with that, it entails an attractive community. To have sidewalks and things that make our areas more attractive. If anybody's noticed, our main street has one sidewalk, if you look at the four corners right at Main and Market, one sidewalk is relatively, done relatively well, and the rest are not. I asked why that was at one time, and they said they go to the businesses and have them put up half. To me, that doesn't seem fair, because a lot of these businesses want to come into downtown and not necessarily have the money, again, cost effective, or the fair, you know, amount to do the sidewalk. But they still need an attractive and well-secure place for people to come and see their establishment. Another one would be preserving the open spaces we have, which we do relatively well now with the farmlands and our environmental protection areas. We do that relatively well. So that is a plus side of our area. So we can actually take that and run with it and grow, because we have that already. So it's something that is there that we need to benefit from. And lastly, it'd be just a variety of, like more building freedoms, land use freedoms, just other freedoms that give people the will to want to come here. Restriction is also really bad in our area outside of the city. Camping trails, things like that are just non-existent. Places that I used to go camp, you know, if we're going to tell some stories, I used to camp in McPhee a lot. Can't do that anymore. So having some of these restrictions taken back would help with growing and the smart growth and the freedom. And there you guys go.
All right. Timer. No, I'm just kidding. Man, pray that we have the problem of lots of businesses and people wanting to move here, or enough that we've got to seriously carve out new real estate for a school or something. I know that some concerns that people have is empty buildings on Main Street. Harder for people to do business. In current events, we're, here's a very real piece of news. We lost 100 grand overnight for rooms on the books at one property. 100 grand in cancellations between less than 24 hours ago. That's a very real impact on a local business in town because of something none of us can control. I think smart and sustainable growth, you know, at the county commissioners meeting, we had a, they, we, they had a really intense, I don't know, I thought it was border, it didn't quite, wasn't as awesome as the land use code meeting. That was literally awesome, to see everybody show up and everyone talk. And that was a fantastic thing to be a part of. But there's some stuff going on with water rights and water conservancies and agendas and stuff that are probably terrifying is not a bad word to use. Oh my gosh, you guys, if we got the wrong commissioners, we got a problem. When it comes to sustainable growth, and that word is a trigger for me, because like you guys are saying, that means different thing for everybody. And when you get into a legal document and sustainable is defined as, it starts to get complicated for people trying to put businesses and homes in. We've got another problem. But I don't, when's the last time a city has grown so fast in Montezuma County that the whole city's screwed up because it didn't plan for growth? I don't know. I don't know. I've only been here since 98. I don't think that's happening. It feels like we're shrinking a tiny bit. So it'd be great to have the problem, but man, I don't, I don't think we want tons of restrictions. I think if someone wants to come here, we need to find out what is going to, I mean, it's, maybe it's an old sales thing, but you want to eliminate objections. You want to, you don't want to say no. There are times where you don't want to say no if it's in everybody's best interest. I'm not talking about, like, not saying no to someone that wants a liquor store 10 feet from an elementary school. I mean, like, businesses coming here incentivizing things. Our being smart about growth really should be about some council members trying to make it make sense for people to come here without totally flipping a table over for somebody that's not going to give us anything back. Because at that point, we've got local businesses here that we're not going to do a dang thing for, that I know of. Why aren't we helping local businesses that are already here try and make it a little easier for them to do business as, you know, property owners or residents or just people living here? So I don't think we should go crazy and sell our souls to get a big box store or something. I don't think that's wise. But hey, 3 minutes and 20 seconds, put that mic down. Okay, yeah, no, that's it.
Ray?
Well, I still think growth is good. I don't like the medians in the highway, but I think we're due for a truck route. And I think that's what the state of Colorado's planning for us. Is it on? Oh, oh, okay. I got it. I hope. Anyway, I think we're due for a truck route. And I think that's what the state of Colorado's going to implement. And I think within about six months, as soon as the weather clears, we can rely on it a little. I think that's what we're going to see happen. And I, and I'm for that. I don't like seeing trucks stop in the middle of our main street unloading their produce to our stores. And I think we could have done a lot better job on these medians. I hear a lot of people having fought with the, with the medians. And I, as an engineer on highways, I would have done some things a little different. But at the same time, I think they're necessary also. So that's where I stand with growth. And I like growth, too. I like to see us advance. But I want to, I want to bring the country folks along with us. That's where I am.
Rachel, the terms smart growth and sustainable growth?
So I think we all enjoy the rural way of life that we have here. So what smart growth and sustainability means to me is really asking ourselves important questions before we rapidly try to grow our population and get people to relocate here. You know, the questions I have are, will we have enough water for growth in our municipalities while making sure our farmers and ranchers get their allocated rights? Are we going to make sure we still have land to grow our food and feed our cattle? Are we going to have enough funds to maintain our roads? Is our law enforcement properly funded to protect all of our citizens? The bottom line is, can we sustain large groups of people relocating here? And are we ready for that? And how should, the other question was, how should the city and county coordinate this? I think we need to evaluate what our carrying capacity is here. And water is a vital part of our, you know, our life and our community. And before we try to just double our population or, you know, attract more, we need to make sure that we, we have the resources for that and that we are doing that smartly.
Yeah, Rachel kind of stole my thunder there on the water. But smart growth and sustainability means not growing past our, the capabilities of our resources. And water has always been the most important resource in this, this part of the country. We need to encourage and not mandate, but encourage residents to use water in more efficient ways. Zero scapeing, for example. Just try to take care of what we have and grow within the means of what we do have.
You're going to be up again, Justin.
Yeah, Ray.
We'll put the clock on you. A question that was sent in here was, how do you determine if or when the city should be involved in economic development? And if so, how do you coordinate with the county? Since growth and economic development affects both jurisdictions.
I have no problem coordinating with the county. I, I like Larry Don. That guy's fiery. I like Mr. Urte, and I think I have a really good relationship with Jim. He's, man, he's saved us so much money against his best interests. That is a really, we're so lucky. He's going to be the holdover. I think the county commissioner race is a really important thing for everybody to look at, to get to know the candidates. Who's going to be sitting up there with him? Because they've got some, they're looking down the barrel at some issues. Like I'm talking about the water rights. And there are words like voluntarily donating things are going to be compensated for. And I don't, you know, I'm, I like a few conspiracy theories, not the crazy ones, but I think it tickles my fancy occasionally. And what I see is like someone scooping up some land, chopping their property up, parcelling it, putting all the rights on one thing, selling it down river, letting it go fallow. Like, there are some people who are interested in us not keeping our water and it not going in a field. And I don't even think we're using all of it right now. So, not to make it about water rights, but that's just something that's been rolling around inside my head. And there's no way in, there's no way in heck I'm putting gravel back in my yard, Mr. Banks. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just, I've moved, right? Man, I've moved so much gravel off of my property, you guys, to grow some grass and maybe a couple trees. And maybe that's not responsible with water. And it makes sense that it's not, but I'm not putting gravel back. I'm not going to do it. It was a nightmare. That stuff is, that sucked. I think, I have no problem working with the county. I love going to the meetings. They're a little more fiery, although I can't say that. The land use code was, I mean, they should have served refreshments. It was intense. We just had another, two, last two city council meetings were pretty intense. There were a lot of people with strong feelings and super important issues. I don't see any problem working with the county. But one of the things that I think is misunderstood and miscommunicated is there's really, when we're talking about working with the county, we're not talking about getting along. Everybody that I've met is a good person. I've not met a villain yet in government. I've met some people that have made some mistakes and are misunderstood and maybe did some things that they regret, maybe. I haven't met any villains. I've met some villains in my life. We don't got any that I've met. Working together means money. It means how much is the city going to pay for this? How much is the city going to contribute? Are we going to share? It's really just money. I don't think the county and the city has a problem getting together on issues. It's a really tough one. We need more money, which means we need more business. I would like to see more business. I don't want to see Cortez change into something that no one can recognize. Because when I moved here, not being a native Coloradan, I loved this place. I loved things about it. I bought a home here. This will be where I die. I'm not moving again. I want to be here. And there are things that attracted me about being here. It reminded me being a kid in Wyoming in a small town. But working together is really, honestly, it's not a personality thing. It's about being there and talking about money. And wow, that's a taboo, especially in government. You want to see someone on city council freak out, bring up donating money. It's probably, Larry Donald just shout you down and go, where are we, no, he's awesome. He'll tell you how he feels.
Back to you, Ray. Economic development. When should the city be involved and how do they coordinate with the county? Economic development. When should the city be involved in creating economic development? And how do they coordinate with the county?
Well, I think... Am I with you? Okay. I look forward to working with our county representatives, really. I know both of them from childhood. And I really look forward to getting close to Sukla a little bit. He'll be there in November, he told me. So that'll, that'll get us acquainted again. And I think together, I think this city holds a lot of, I don't want to say city. I think our community has a lot of good possibilities that both sides, the city and the county, can work together. We can prosper from one another and with one another. And that's where I stand on it. I'll do anything I can to accommodate them. And I'll respect the same from them when we present a problem to them. And that's where I go.
Rachel?
I think the most effective way to do economic development is to have the city and county work together. And I think we need to figure out, what are the hurdles that business owners are facing? What can we do to open the doors to business owners and to get those vacant buildings filled and to grow our economy? I also want to see, you know, what kind of industries can we bring here that's going to hire from, that's going to hire from our community? And keep our residents from having to travel to other communities to make their, to make their living and then come back here. You know, and it's, it's something that we all need to work together on, city, county, and residents, to really get a better picture of what would be the best for our community and the growth for it and for our future.
Yes, of course, the city and the county should work together on economic, bringing people in, bringing new business and sustaining the businesses that are here. Two examples of helping bring new business here and keeping the businesses that are already established vibrant are keeping our tax rates low and keeping regulations to a minimum. And I think the city and county can work on those two things together and would certainly go a long ways to helping business and growing this area.
I definitely think that the city and the county should work to develop more, or work together to have some more development in our area economically. Actually, I even think we should take it one step farther and go outside of our Cortez area. I mean, we have Mankis and Dolores. And if we're going to work with the county, then we need to look at our whole area as a whole. We have a lot of people that want to come to Cortez, but we could also bring in Dolores and Mankis to show them, hey, we have a tri- triangle. You guys can, you know, go to all these places. We, again, going back to saying what I was saying, us being closer to other states. We have the opportunity to, you know, maybe work with other states, maybe take some of their ideas, maybe see what they've done during their economic development plans. Again, New Mexico, Utah, I mean, Moab is a huge one for jeeping. Again, this is just a recent one that I went to. There was, they've been talking about OHVs over in Dolores, and they're voting on that. They had representatives come down from Silverton. They were bad and good, but on the good side of it, all of their businesses have been more successful. They have had more money, more people, and more industry in their town. Not necessarily saying that's good for us, but they're relatively close. And we can at least take some of the examples that they've lived through and apply it to our community. Again, we are not just Cortez. We can broaden our spectrum to bring people outside into Cortez a little bit more by working with not just the county, but all these other places. And we can have a cohesive plan for all of us.
Ray, it looks like we're back to you to start off. What is your opinion on the county's red flag resolution? Do you remember, our county made a stand that opposed the red flag law that the legislature passed? What is your opinion about the county doing that?
I was more or less born with a gun. I've always had guns. I trapped musk rats when I was in grade school. Traded them to the Raleigh and McNess guy when they'd come by the ranch. And that's how I got my ammo for the next. I, I don't see where guns are a problem to anyone, really. It's a means of defense. We all have the right to defend ourselves or others. And... ourselves, or others, and to me, I've been an NRA member, I don't know how long, but no, I don't like that red flag law at all, I don't think, okay?
Go ahead, Rachel.
I think it's, it's something that doesn't really truly address the issues and struggles that people have in our community, I think it's a quick fix for, for something that we keep avoiding and that we, we really aren't spending all of our resources understanding why people are mentally ill, why people are a danger and I think it's, I think it's an issue that we, we need to take a hard look on, on why, why the red flag law came about and why they think, why people think that that's gonna solve all these issues because it won't and we, yeah, we just need to, to really understand where it's coming from.
I'm completely against all red flag laws, I believe it's a perfect example of how a legislative, a legislative law has come into conflict with, with the constitution, the, the second amendment, yeah, it's, it is an, it's an unconstitutional law as far as I'm concerned.
I also oppose red flag gun laws, I have, I believe solely freedom of, you know, your second amendment rights, to me, I'm like Mr. Raymond over there, it's just a tool, every tool has its trade, every tool has its use, if you use a tool poorly, it's gonna have poorer outcomes, to me, there is mental health issues, but we've had mental health issues for many, many years and I would hope those people would, you know, get the help they need before it comes down to them buying guns, but to me, this is a huge overstep.
Awesome, the idea that we need a new law every time stuff comes up is crazy, I don't, I, I think we've got some great laws, but man, it seems like all we're doing anymore is just making laws all day, new laws, law, crazy laws, like laws no one's gonna read, laws like consent agreements for Apple every couple months, I mean, that's crazy stuff, when a lawyer's the only one that can inform you about the law, we've, we've lost some footing and I don't know how we get that back, it freaks me out that every year, we're sitting in congress making as many laws as we can, that's pretty intense, I think we should figure out how to spend money, I don't think we should be, like I said, I'm sure there are some great laws out there, I don't know all of them, who in this room knows every law, probably you two guys probably know, what, eighty-five percent maybe, nine, seventy, yeah, what the heck, you guys, so, I think the red flag thing, I don't think it's an issue, I think it's, I think it's really suspect to conflate mental health and gun ownership, I think that's very suspect. The real issue is what, how we all feel about whether or not we should all have guns, I feel we should all have guns, I feel the more people that went to the shooting range and learned how to shoot, the better, I would think it would be epic if this, somehow we could help subsidize, subsidize and educate some people about gun ownership and not to be scared of it, I mean, man, it's just, it's like, it's like, it's like a tool, as our squirrel hunting friend on the end, you've gotta tell me that story, Ray, later, about hunting rabbits and squirrels, I've never done that, that sounds crazy. Mental health is a totally separate issue and that is a heartbreaking thing we all probably feel very strongly about and are all touched by, it's a friend, someone's kid, I think that's a really intense issue and has nothing to do with gun ownership or gun control, in my opinion, and it scares me and I guess that's probably, makes sense that you guys are asking this question, if this is near and dear to you guys, as hard on the nine twelve commission, this is, I mean, makes sense that this might be an area of like encroachment on constitutional rights, but man, I don't know, I know Sheriff Nowland, I like him, I like him a lot and I trust him and man, I don't think he's gonna run around and try and round up everybody's guns and I know that's not the red flag law, but that's maybe the deeper issue that everyone's thinking about, what, man, when you take a, a foot every couple days and then pretty soon, if you have anything other than a shotgun with three shells, you're a criminal, wow, that's, that's not good for us, I love guns, I love them, I don't wanna shoot people, they're awesome. Conflating mental health and guns seems like an intellectually dishonest thing to do and I think that's at the heart of the red flag gun laws, I think it's a, an, an attempt to try and address an issue that should be looked at as two separate things.
Rachel, we're back to you, I'm gonna, you're gonna catch a double duty right here cuz we have one question that really is for you specifically and when you answer that one, maybe we go on to another one that's for everybody, okay, you get two questions of what? For you specifically, working for the county, if elected to city council, how would you balance council business?
I think that's, that's a great question, that's probably on everybody's mind because I, you know, the county commissioners are my, my boss, but, you know, I think there's mutual respect there and I will make sure to not compromise my job because that first and foremost is most important to me, but I also am a citizen of Cortez and I believe I have a right to participate in local government there and I've talked to the attorneys for both and I'm gonna make sure that I don't ever cross those lines and if it means skipping some meetings so that I don't get privy to information before everybody else, I will do what's right and I will make sure that I'm held accountable and that I, I take off my county hat and, and put on my citizen hat when, when the time comes.
It's inappropriate, but may I, may I jump in really quick if, if, with your permission, when, get to know Rachel, get to know the county commissioners, you have no issue there, she is awesome, she's not gonna be pushed around by anybody and she's gonna do the job, she's super smart and capable and invested and get to know the commissioners, they're not gonna tell Rachel what to do, that, they, if anything, they'll be supportive of what she does, we've got good people, I don't think it's a concern, I think we're okay.
You're campaigning for her, for the position you want.
I don't see a, a conflict of interest involved there, I, I believe that the county and the city should work together, we're all, we're all citizens of the county, even though us that live in the city, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, we can, that's all right, we can trip that, let's go on with the second part, another question. Rachel, would you support term limits for board positions like the planning and zoning board?
That is a great question cuz I hadn't really thought about it before because I haven't been on board long enough to go through two terms, but I think, I think term limits would be a good idea because, you know, I, I think it's important to get more and more citizens engaged and involved and if that means that, you know, boards have to sit open and we have to, you know, speak out people, I, I think that's good because you can get stuck in, just certain mindsets if people are just, stay on boards too long and I think those need refreshing and I think they should be advertised for, for the community because there may be other people interested that we don't know about that, but if people just keep getting reappointed, they, they never get a chance, so, I, I think it would be a good idea.
Bill?
I think it's another one of these questions of balance, it depends on how much interest there is in the community in filling those board spots, if there's some substantial interest in filling them, I'd say, yes, let's, let's get some new blood in there, but if, if we're down to one or two members on a board, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep somebody there that's discussing situations and making decisions, so, I, I would, I would, like I say, it's a question of balance, depending on how much community interest there is on filling those spots on the board, if there are, if there is a lot of community interest in it, then I would say, yes, let's turn it over, let's, let's, let's get other people on there as they, they become interested.
I also do believe that they should be term limited, with the option of if they're going unopposed and if they're actually, if the city has actually reached out and allowed other people the option to wanna run for these board positions, you know, that would be the end of their term limit, again, if they're unopposed and if there's nobody else and there's no interest, cuz I've, I've been told this quite a bit, that our boards are lacking, actually, we just were told that, I think, three of our boards, one being the Parks, Rec and Forestry Board still needs somebody, so, we do have a lack of people wanting to actually be on certain boards, so I do understand why they would wanna reappoint people in certain instances, but having them term limited would at least give the option to be open to the community and have that chance for other people to stand up if they would like, unlike we had yesterday.
Was this to all of us or just Rachel's second question?
That's Rachel's second question, so, so this is yours.
Oh, the second, okay, sorry, man, if you, if you've served on a board, I was super excited the first time I was asked to serve on a board, I, it was an insane boost to my self-esteem that someone wanted to, you know, the public might wanna hear my opinion and stuff and I'm on the Board of Tourism, every meeting's awesome, but I, man, I've sat in on a couple board meetings while running and we, 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 not everybody's the brightest light, that's my opinion, but I mean, I think that holds a little bit of water, I think as the interest is there, I love the idea of like, you know, just like city council where your term can expire and if there's no interest, it's a, we cruise on, but if we've got like fifteen people interested in being on planning and zoning, well, those are fifteen crazy people, have you sat through a planning and zoning, how do you do that? It was, it's, it's rough, you guys, they're making some serious decisions that require lots of education, lots of intelligence, lots of knowledge about issues, I couldn't make it, I mean, I've watched, I've watched all the city council episodes back to two seventeen and I, twenty seventeen and I can't make it through a P, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it's just rough, it's all the most boring stuff about city council, is what it feels like, I think, I don't know if we should, there are some things we lose and that's the dilemma, I think, that we're all looking at, is when we get someone good and we gotta lose them, you know, that hurts us, I think there are some people that if we lose, we hurt as a city, I think having new blood constantly on board seats may not be the best idea, but boy, we should have everyone, we should have a, a really clear process and accessibility for people to sit on these meetings, like, you know, it was decently difficult for me to find out all the boards, when they meet and get on, to be able to even witness it, that could be way easier, and I don't know, the answer's a tough one, you guys, cuz when we get someone that's knowledgeable, we really should make some exceptions and I don't know how a group, as a group of people, we determine who that is and it's gotta be really easy, easier for us to challenge some people that maybe are just warming a seat and that's the feeling I got on some of these boards, that someone didn't wanna be there, they were out, they were out mid-sentence when a minute hand struck noon, they weren't invested and that, that's very sad, I mean, anyway, yeah, but I don't know if it should, I don't think it's as easy as a yes or no, but I see the issues and I see the, the benefits to having someone on there for a long time.
Ray, we have term limits for the boards.
I love them, I wish we had them in Washington, I, I see nothing wrong with having term limits, I think it's a good policy and one that I would be one hundred percent for.
We'll back down to Mr. Banks, Bill, we'll start off with new question, what is your position on recent official action taken by the current council on the wilderness study areas in the council and the county that was in direct opposition to the county commissioner's position?
To tell you the truth, I'm not real familiar with, with what went on, but I would say, just knowing who's on the county commission and who's been on the city council, I would probably side with those on the county commission.
Ray?
Do you mind if I ask for clarification of what wilderness, what wilderness, are you talking about like the wolves or the wa, like?
Okay, for a brief item, there's two classifications of, of federal wilderness, there's wilderness areas and then twenty-five years ago, they had an act that established, we need to study to see if we need some more wilderness areas and then those, so they started studying with the Forest Service and the BLM and they studied areas that was suggested might be good, these became wilderness study areas and from that study, they said, should we recommend they be wilderness or should we not recommend they be wilderness, in our county where there were several study areas, one of them is the Minifee Mountain, right up over here and it's out on the west end likewise, these were recommended, no, they should not be wilderness study areas, or they shouldn't be converted into wilderness, the way congress works, or doesn't, those study areas were never acted upon and as a result, they were treated as wilderness, in other words, they were never managed, they were just left sitting there as if they were wilderness, even though they weren't, they were study areas that had to be non-managed like a wilderness until a decision by congress was made, it passed, long story short, but our legislative and congressional delegation tried to get those, our county recommended, they'd be set up and removed out of study area status so they could be managed and it's, that's a result of, one of the issues that came up was there was noxious weed problems on the wilderness study area affecting the landowners around, around the study area and the study area, you couldn't treat them because it was in a wilderness study area, you don't do things like that and so the county was pushing to have them removed so they could go back to managing them and treating them like they should and the city sided with the environmental groups that says, we need to make these wilderness, keep them and make them wilderness and not manage them, the county says, no, manage them, the city said, yes, we think they should be wilderness.
Okay, I, in that instance, then, I would actually side with the county, just from going to a lot of the county commissioners' meetings and talking with those gentlemen, they have a better idea of what is out there in our county, they have the resources, they work directly with the Forest Service, they work directly with the sheriff, they work directly with a lot of these entities that would, you know, regulate that area, I would definitely side with the county with management, again, I think the county has actually done a pretty good job by allowing management up in our forests up north, I don't see why they shouldn't be given the opportunity to, you know, to manage the areas down there and if they've been under studies and environmental things for as long as they have, you know, maybe the management, the mitigation of those areas might be nice for, you know, the surrounding areas and, again, maybe even might actually help with the environmental development of trees and things being cleared out so that new, you know, trees and bushes and things can grow, because whenever you have stagnant trees and things growing on top of each other and there's no light hitting the actual bottom floor for anything to grow, then you're not gonna get anywhere, you know, you're just gonna have weeds, like the noxious weed, like you were saying, so, to me, I side with the county on that and we need to manage our lands more and again, they have a better idea, even our current running ones, Kent Lindsey, I know he has been a county commissioner before, he would have a way better idea, you know, in my opinion.
This is a great example of knowing when to, for me, knowing when to, I need more education on a subject versus just coming down on education on a subject versus just coming down on something using my gut and a third-hand or rudimentary understanding of the issues. What I would, what, in a situation like this, if I had to, on the spot, vote on something with no background or no time to study, we're in a pickle. I think I would abstain, or I would vote with someone that I trusted, who had character that I understood. However, I don't, I don't have enough knowledge. I would really like to know what the commissioners thought about it and how they felt. I'd also like to know why the city voted the way they did and what were the reasons, because sometimes we vote for things just because we think it's a bad idea without investing it, investigating it. I've seen, you never know what's going on in someone's head, but I've, I think I've seen people make decisions every day that are super uninformed. And that's not evil and it's not wrong, it's a mistake and it's gotta be corrected. I would correct it through educating myself more about the issue. It's, this is also another really great example of non-monetary cooperation between the city and the county. You know, I don't want to, like, completely lean the teeter totter always over in the county, but I do like those guys, and they are really informed about our issues in the county. They are very informed, and they don't always agree, you guys. Larry Don and O'Tel and Jim, I think, not, I mean, I don't want to speak for them or mischaracterize something, but there was a situation where on an issue that was super important, they all had a totally different take on it, and they were all thoughtful, intelligent perspectives. That's not me on this issue. I don't know where I stand on it, and to, I would need to know, I'd like to know why the city opposed it and what the reasons were for, and if they were advised what those persons' reasons were for. There's a reason to do everything, and there, there is a need to, not everyone has good motives, you know. I, I imagine, if you're doing something with malevolence or animosity, that's a terrible motive, even to run for something. Yeah, that's.
Ray?
Yeah, I stand with him on that issue of whether the, the county commissioners and us would get together. I think, I think we would work good together. I, I've been in a couple of their meetings, and I know they don't see eye to eye with one another, but like he said, if you ask for the reasons behind the decision, sometime it clarifies a lot, and I think we would work great together. I really do.
Rachel?
I, I enjoy wilderness areas and I respect them, but I think it is need to be case by case. And Menifee Mountain is a, a great example of lack of management poses a great wildfire risk to our community, to the community of Mankus. So, I think the BLM and the overseers of that land need to address the noxious weed issues and the, the threats that, that are there against our community, because we're hopefully gonna have a wet summer, but we don't know, and if they're not managing our weeds, but we require our private property, our private citizens to, to manage their weeds, they, they need to be held accountable.
Well, Bill, we're down to about the last question. And this is, takes a little thought, I think. Whoops, I'm getting a... We make it real quick, we can get, maybe we'll make it. Let's see, let's see, let's see which one here. This is a, kind of a two-part, it's an either/or. Would you rather promote growth of economic development and follow it with necessary support through infrastructure, or plan for the development of infrastructure so that the growth is controlled? Chicken or the egg?
I believe we have to, to, to promote growth first and then, then, and then have infrastructure catch up with growth, because if we, if we build infrastructure first and growth doesn't happen, we've wasted a lot of money.
That's kind of a toss-up. For me, again, it kind of goes back to what you guys asked before with, we need to utilize the lands that we already have in place and in, in existence, and use those first. So, I guess mine would be growth first, because we have at least a little bit of land space and at least a little bit of open buildings. And again, I know we have other developments, again, our industrial park, I know at one time from living here, they wanted to put another industrial park out here behind where the all-weather storage is at one time. So, I know there are areas for growth, land-wise, already in our area. I think we just need to actually have the growth and development here. Again, it kind of just goes back to being fair, predictable, basically, you know, cost-effective for everybody, and putting everybody on the same plane of, we all can just come in with the same and do the same, rather than the fluctuations of maybe case-by-case scenarios, like, make it more the same.
That's an awesome question. What I, in the spirit of the question, an either/or, I probably, I don't agree with answering that, and here's why. I am capable of doing, like, ten things at once. I don't know how hard you guys have worked, but I'm sure a lot of you have done multiple things at once. I don't just plan for growing my business, I also cut costs. I don't run a hotel going, well, we're either gonna triple our bottom line or grow our revenue and sink the ship. It's not, complicated things can be done expertly addressing all issues. Our nation is a great example of doing tons of stuff at once as best as we can. I understand the spirit of the question, what's more important, and I think there's a ton of things that are important. I mean, infrastructure in advance of growth and then chasing growth, both of those, I think, if you do one of them and not the other, there's a huge downside to it. I think we need to do both of those and more. It's not really just about infrastructure, but who, what kind of growth is it? So, it's a complicated question in hospitality and what I do. Man, if I'm not doing ten things at once, you guys, I'm not earning my paycheck. I have gotta do, I've gotta do a lot of stuff, and if I just did one of those things, we, I wouldn't be in my job, I, I, it would be a problem. And I know all of you guys are capable of doing that. I don't, I, either/or, you know, I don't want to be dishonest and not answer the question. I would say, because I'm a salesperson and I like that stuff, I would say if I had to choose, I would want to grow before thinking about what to do with everything that came. But I, I'd like to look at the question a little differently.
Ray?
My experience of that is, I stand with Bill. I don't want to spend money needlessly. I'd like to have the money to do it, but I would be very cautious about the one that was doing the infrastructure. I'd investigate them first.
Ms. Rachel?
Um, I, I'd agree with Bill as well. I think, you know, we have vacant buildings, not just on Main, but through, throughout Cortez, and I don't think the demand on, say, our sanitation or all of our other resources is beyond their capacity right now. So, I'd like to see those filled before we spend taxpayer money, hoping that, that things are used.
Okay, I guess we, we'll start off with Rafe on this last question. This will be our last question, and if anybody has questions to do and get answered, or you've got more questions, we'll have plenty of time to buttonhole them and ask them their individual question. This is really kind of an important question in our, in our minds. What is the proper roles of city council and city manager? You would be the council and the city manager. What is the role of those two different?
To me, the role of a city council member to start should be open to listen, open to what the public has to say, and if the council themselves can't come together with a cohesive idea, then we need to reach out to the people. We need to actually take things a little bit, you know, farther, and if we can't come together, then we need to let the citizens decide. The citizens decide who is up on this council, and we make choices for them, but as I've went to a few workshops and have noticed, those choices aren't always followed with what the citizens have to say. Again, the example I have is, they decided not to name our South Park, or the South Neighborhood Park Panther Park, and they're gonna go for a third try of asking the community of what they would like to name it, even though they've asked us twice. This kind of comes back to, I just feel like, our city council members, with the exception of a couple, truly aren't listening to us and truly aren't reaching out to us the way they are. Some of the city council members, I believe, are taking the advice of the city employees a little bit more rather than their constituents, and I think there needs to be a fifty-fifty of that, you know. Yes, you're there, and yes, you manage these people in a sense, but at the same time, all of you folks voted for all of us. We have to remember that, and we have to kind of keep that in the back of our minds all the time, and some of that's a little missed. As for the city manager, I would hope and wish that he would know what he's doing, and he or she, I guess, I would hope that they would have a general idea and a good idea of how to be and how to act and how to present themselves and be really public and being out there and trying to represent our town in a way. I'm not gonna true, you know, speak poorly upon our city manager because he came in in a crunch and he has done a relatively good job, but with anybody who comes into a crunch, sometimes you're gonna take the flak and sometimes it's deserved. I mean, he has even said that he takes full blame for the land use code, which is great. I mean, I'm actually glad that at least one of those people stood up and said, hey, I'm responsible, take it out on me. That's kind of a good thing. At the same time, I feel like we have had a little bit of a miss. I know Mr. Vastling has mentioned he feels like he would be a better candidate, and I feel like maybe we could have other candidates out there that might be better. Again, with that being said, our city manager has to be a good face for our town and needs to be a face and be out there, like, every, every event, or at least try and be a face for our community.
Hire and fire, to be literal, that's what we do. We interview and hire the city manager, and if we don't like him or whatever, we're gonna fire him. The, where I feel a lot of people are thinking about that question is much more important than the truth behind what the city council's role is with the city manager. I've said a couple times that I'm more qualified to be a city manager probably than a city councilman. I live and breathe operations. I'm not the candidate that's gonna be punitive to Mr. Doherty. So, if you're looking for someone to get on the council to smash or to reprimand or fire Mr. Doherty or to get rid of Niva or our planners or to somehow express some frustration and some anger, which is 100% legitimate, by looking at our council and our city employees as people we're gonna tell what to do, and we've got some, I've got some fellow candidates running that I, I feel, I don't know if any of them are here, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody on the stage here, but I've heard some stuff where it feels, and this scares me, you guys, I'm upset about some stuff, but man, the answer isn't punch and fire and demean and accountability isn't demanding answers. That is not what accountability looks like. It almost always looks like working with somebody and helping them. Every time I've tried, when I'm, have a situation where there's an accountability issue, that's where I am, showing them the responsibility that we have to envelop and how important it is to own things. There, I think, is a lot of frustration with the land use code, which is awesome, I'm not gonna bring it up again, I don't think we need one, I think we fix it case by case. I don't think, I think if, I think if you're running and you want to smash Ben Burkett because he's in charge of finance, and you want to get Jim to fire some people or, you know, get rid of Rebecca Levy because she said the F-word, I'm not your candidate for that. But what I am your candidate for is someone that's going to work with everybody, lift them up, find out what we're struggling with. When you work with someone, you know if they're stealing. You don't know if someone's stealing if you're shouting at them from up on a dais and holding them accountable for numbers. You find out where someone's heart's at by being with them in their struggles and helping them through their situation. The answer's not to, to get rid of these folks, and I'm not your candidate, and I know there are some people that want to do that, and I just, I'm begging you, have a little more forgiveness, a little more patience. More than is appropriate has been asked of this community, more than is appropriate. Couple more times, maybe. Maybe it's not over, maybe a lot more times, we're gonna have to let people mature into their positions, and it is so rare you have to fire somebody. And I've got three businesses I'm responsible for, and every time I've had to fire somebody, I see that as mostly a failure on my part to lift that person into a position of self-respect and ownership of whatever it is their responsibility is. But it is just hire and fire, you guys, and I don't think that's how we fix the city. I don't think that's how we get the medians out of the street. I don't think that's how we mend the trust. I think it'll take years to mend the trust between us and, you guys, we shouldn't be attending city councils every night for fear that the train is off the tracks. We need trust in a representative democracy. Hey, I'm learning stuff, you guys. As a representative, the character of the individuals that are going to be watching your home, watching your business while you're gone for two years or four years, do you trust that person when you come home not to have 100 people living in there, the house damaged, the business shut down? That's us, that's our community, that's our city. Who do you trust to make those tough decisions and help?
Ray?
Okay, I'm gonna look at them just like I do the, our ambassadors with the, with the county. If there's a disagreement, I wanna know why and where and what for, and I'm gonna do my level best to work with them just like I do everybody else that's just cut and dry. If I think it's beneficial for our city, I'm gonna be all over the time, and that's the way, that's the way I'll work.
Rachel?
As, as far as roles, I think the city council works for the citizens and the city manager works for city council. And I think those roles have kind of been blurred in the past, and that could be why some of the issues we, we are facing right now have come up. But I think, you know, kind of what Justin was alluding to, it's, it's easy to say what we're mad about and what, what people did wrong, but where the hard work comes in is, is learning from that, getting past that and working together. City council should be a team. Doesn't mean they always have to agree, but they need to be able to, to really discuss things and, and come to, you know, the best decisions that they can. things and, and come to, you know, the best decisions that they can while, you know, trying their best, and, and listening to their constituents.
Bill?
Yes, as representatives of the citizens of Cortez, it's council's responsibility to hire the general, or the manager. Our job is to do due diligence and proper vetting, make sure we have the right person when we do hire them. And that goes a long way there to, to not having any problems in the future. I was a supervisor in the energy sector for 24 of my 44 years. I fired a total of three people that I can remember. It's, it's all about getting to know somebody that, when you do hire them, and doing what it takes to work with them and not against them.
You started it, didn't you?
Yeah, I thought so.
Well, I think right now, this is about it. I'd like to turn the last question back over to all of our audience, the same question. What do you think, now, first off, don't answer me, but what do you think the role of the city manager and the city council actually is? Now, we'll take time as we'll break up here, and you can, you've heard what they've said, good or bad. Maybe you think they're not as informed as you think they should be. Find out. This is the time to talk to them and get the answers that you're looking for. So, that last question, what do you think they should be doing? As they're on the council, what are they gonna do with the city manager and the city? Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you all for coming, and be careful with our, our health now. Wash your hands when you leave. Okay, thank you.